We are live.
Very good. Good morning, everyone. I welcome everyone viewing and all those involved to the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees of Alabama Community College System. We are meeting via Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and the Chancellor and his staff are well engaged and the system is working well and the board is engaged as well. So I call this meeting to order, and at this time I will recognize Pastor Stiegall Whitfield, United Methodist Church of Montgomery, to give us an invocation and a word of encouragement this morning.
Well, first of all, I think I have to say thank you to all of you for having me, for being invited to be here. I think when I was first invited, it was, it kind of felt a little bit mind-blown a little bit, just because knowing that you all represent multitudes and multitudes of students and staff and faculty that are pillars to the state, to its systems, and I'm just so grateful. And before I pray, the verse that I feel has been on my heart coming into this, and why I feel so grateful about this, is because of what Jesus says in Matthew 22, when he's asked what the most important commandment in all of Scripture is. He references back to Deuteronomy, and he says that it's "to love the Lord your God with all of your heart, soul, mind, and strength." And strength is added in Mark 12, but what catches me there is that in the same breath, it's saying to love the Lord your God with all of your heart, soul, and strength is also to love the Lord with all of your mind. And I believe that you all on this committee ministered or worked to that effect in the state, that you help so many to be strengthened in their mind, in their intellect, and that that is such a vital part in the life of us as humanity, in the life of the church, in the life of the state, and all the students in it. And so for all that you do for the colleges and the community colleges in the state, I just feel that whether or not it's a Christian college, or whatever it is, however it would be classified, private, public, whatever, that what you're doing is beyond valuable. And I'm so grateful for that and what you all do and how you support that. And so I'm thankful for that. And so with that, I'll pray for us. God, I thank you for these men and women who serve you through serving others. God, I thank you that you are with them, that you have brought them together for such a time as this. God, we're going through difficult times. There are so many, especially now as schools are starting up and things, there are so many questions in the air, God, whether it be from politicians, or parents, or teachers, or board members, God, there are so many questions, so many doubts, God, and as well so much optimism even in the midst of the doubt. God, I pray, God, that you would give wisdom and revelation to these men and women as they serve you, God, as they serve others. Strengthen them, God. Give them discernment. I pray that you would open their eyes to see our this state as you see it, that you give them ears to hear your voice as they lead, Jesus, that they would lead as you led, not seeking to be served, but coming to serve others, God, themselves. God bless them. Give them the spiritual, emotional, physical strength to do their jobs. Give them the compassion and empathy, God, to love others, even through the difficulties of their own lives and the difficulties of their jobs. God, I just exalt you over this meeting and declare that you are our shepherd, that you lead us perfectly, Lord, and that we have no reason to doubt your leadership. I pray that it would be on display over the span of this meeting and in the months and years to come in this state and in its community colleges. May they be a beacon of light, God, in this state that would give hope and inspire many. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pastor Stiegall, this time we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, a wish to stand, my nation, under God, indivisible, with whom justice is. Ms. Wilkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Susan Foye?
Present.
Mr. Matthew Woods? Ms. Crystal Brown?
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Present.
Mr. Jeff Newman? Governor Ivey? Chairman Thompson, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Board members received this well in advance, and at this time I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Any changes in the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. If you would please call the roll. Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting, the July 8, 2020 meeting. Board members have received it well in advance, and if they've had a chance to look it over, at this time I will entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
We'll move to the business part of the agenda, action items. We have under seven, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, fiscal, information technology, and workforce. We have here five refunding resolutions for Chattahoochee Valley, Lawson State, Enterprise State, Trenton State, and Coastal Alabama. These were on last month's work session. Is there any objection considering these all at once, Mr. McAnally?
No objection. The Audit Finance Committee has reviewed these, I think, extensively. We support them. There's been slight changes along the way, but they're minor in nature, and we recommend addressing them all.
Mr. O'Brien, is that in order for us to do that?
It is, sir.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we approve the refunding authorized resolution for Chattahoochee Valley, Lawson State, Enterprise State, Trenton State, Coastal State, Coastal Alabama Community College. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, a second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion?
Just so appreciate in the finance committee, every, them looking for ways for us to save money and be fiscally responsible. So thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I would add that as our team that were working this problem, or this opportunity, I should say, began to look, they found a little bit more, and our overall savings are now, I think, exceeding four and a half million dollars. So it's absolutely a good thing to do.
That's fantastic.
Great. Great work. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. We have a motion to approve the refunding authorized resolution for bonds for Chattahoochee Valley Community College, Lawson State Community College, Enterprise State Community College, Trenton State Community College, and Coastal Alabama Community College. Please call the roll, Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 786 is the allocation of the 2021 two-year college system and prison education operations and maintenance appropriation for Alabama Community College System. Is there a motion?
Motion by Milton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Foye. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. We have a force of recommendation for the, to approve the allocation of the 2020, 2021 two-year college system and prison education operations and maintenance approach appropriation. At this time, we will call the roll for the vote.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 787 is the 2021 ACCS salary schedules. At this, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just point out that these basically are the same rates as we had last year, as no increase was approved by the legislature.
Thank you, Mr. McAnally. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote for the 2021 ACCS salary schedule. Please call the roll, Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Section 8, Executive Legal and Public Information, 8A1, is a recommendation for the approval of a bookstore operations agreement for Trenton State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
They're moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just add that this is following kind of a trend that we have across the system. These contracts have proven to be most beneficial and cost-effective for most all of our colleges.
Very good. And I think this particular recommendation is very similar to what we approved for Drake State.
It is.
And along with this. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 8, personnel.
I've included in your booklet, you should have a list of interim acting presidents and a variety of issues that we are going to have to be talking about over the next several days, next several weeks, in fact. Mr. Chairman, I do want to ask you if you will consider to go ahead and officially accept the letter from Perry Ward of his retirement from Lawson Community College after long and very productive service, and that of Martha Lavender. I think we need to do those individually and go ahead and accept those two letters of their retirement. So if you would, I'd like to go ahead and officially add, then I want to have some conversation about other positions.
Very good. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the retirement letter for President Perry Ward of Lawson State Community College.
Some motion by Milton Davis.
Motion by Chair.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? We'll move both in. Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of a letter of retirement from Dr. Martha Lavender of Gadsden State Community College.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. A letter of retirement's accepted. Chairmaker?
Lawson State has benefited from Dr. Ward's leadership for over 30 years. I'd also like to announce today that I am appointing an interim president to Lawson State to be effective September 1. And this young lady is not a stranger to being an interim president. She's served in three other schools. This is her home school, and she has done in the past tremendous, a tremendous job wherever she's been. She's currently serving here in student services, but I'm appointing Cynthia Anthony, who you all know and appreciate, to continue the service at Lawson during the period of time while we are going through the process of securing a permanent president. The vacancy has already been announced, posted, we have to post for 30 days, and that process is underway. I have not, I'm not ready to appoint an interim, but I will over the next week or so, to appoint an interim for Gadsden State. The difference here, the individual who was the senior dean, academic dean, dean that had functioned in so many leadership roles of that school is retiring at the same time that the president's retiring. So I've got to make a decision about appointing an interim, and I will do so in the course of the next week. I'll let you know who that is. Both Dr. Ward and Dr. Lavender have been tremendous assets to this system. They've done a great service, and at some later date, when we are meeting face-to-face as a board, we will talk about honoring them properly. Mr. Chairman, we have several vacancies, which I've noted in my document to you. We have posted the vacancy at Shelton. That date will close in the next week or so. I've been meeting, I've had one meeting with three of the board members that are serving on that search committee. Mr. McAnally has agreed to serve along with, and we have to find another board member or two who's willing to serve on the Gadsden Search Committee. I want to move to fill those vacancies as fast as we possibly can. The expiration of the contracts, August 31, of Dr. Exley at SNEED, and that of Susan Burris at Central, creates a situation where we, I've had to go ahead and appoint an interim president at SNEED, the chief financial officer, who also has a number of years' experience in higher education, Joe Whitmore, and I would report that he is doing a very good job at this point. Jeff Lind is serving at Central. Jeff is doing a tremendous job building community support. Both are undertaking the process of the ASPIRE 2030. It's come at a good time for both those schools, because we have a lot we need to do at those schools. So as we go through that process, at some point in the near future, I will be asking board members to assist me in the search process. Lerline Wallace, Chris Cox has been serving as interim there. The community has been most receptive, and they are responding tremendously well to doing everything they can to map out a future for that college. Chris has been a real asset in that process. Brian Helms, fortunately, will be able to come back to this office, because we need his effort in maintaining stability over the school's financial positions, as soon as we can appoint a permanent president there. Joe Verk has been such a blessing at Calhoun that we just kind of tend to go forward with that process. But I've had conversations with the two members from Tucata, and we're going to be talking about that in the immediate future. Anita Archie, serving as interim president at Trenton, Trenton is moving forward. I would suggest to you that there's going to be some rough times, because there are a lot of decisions that are going to have to be made about moving Trenton to, from where it is to move forward, to meet the standard that we feel that it should meet by 2030, or even well before then. And then Reed State is still operating with an interim president. We've been talking about shared services and other options, because from an economic standpoint, Reed is so small that carrying the overhead cost is a real burden to the academic programs and the workforce programs. So we'll have further conversations about that in the immediate future. That's kind of a report that I'm not happy about. I don't, I don't mean I resent any of this, but filling that many vacancies with the quality of people that we need to provide leadership in this system is a daunting task, and I appreciate your patience and your efforts in working with me as we go through a search process. We are posting them 30 days. I suspect from just looking at the applications to this point, we'll have somewhere between 40 and 50 applicants for Shelton. We'll probably have that many for Gadsden. Then we're going to post Andalusia, probably not that many. Tend to be the same applicants at this point. I just wanted to give that report, and I appreciate the support of the board in this whole process, because you know the kind of leadership we need. We have some great presidents, many good presidents in this system, and we want to add to that as we fill these positions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
Thanks for that, that report, and I feel certain we can count on the entire board's support and engagement throughout the process of filling these vacancies, and we're confident of your leadership toward this and forward to helping in any way that we can. Anything else on personnel?
I don't, I don't have anything.
If not, item 10, committee reports. Are there any committees?
Susan, on. Susan. I just promoted her. Okay, Susan.
It's our six under phone. On Susan's phone.
Oh, okay.
I think she's on mute.
Okay. We'll move to Chancellor's report.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes. This was part of my report. Susan, I wanted to go ahead and let's talk a little bit about the planning for the opening of school, and where we think we are, where we see we are, and just a general discussion about that.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. We find ourselves on the eve of taking in students for the fall, starting our instructional programs, and we really and truly are in the same boat that community colleges across the country, as well as four institutions, are finding themselves in. And that is, there's no question it's going to be a soft fall in terms of enrollment. Ben and his staff in our IT division, as well as our folks here at the, at the system office and in our colleges, have been closely monitoring registration and reaching out to students and furiously recruiting, so that everyone knows that we are going to be open for business for this fall. But there is no question that our numbers will be lower. That's anticipated. The fall ops plans have been submitted by all of our colleges. We have reviewed them here in the system office, and they have been approved. And the colleges have, have placed the pertinent portions of those ops plans on their websites. And those portions include training for faculty and staff about operating in the new environment, certainly upholding the social distancing requirements or guidelines that have been issued by the public health authorities, the mask requirements, as well as other safety protocols. Most of our institutions are going to be starting with instructional programs next week, in fact, Monday, and then there are a couple that will be starting the week after that. Our colleges are offering the majority of their classes online to the extent they can, and that includes our academic courses. There are some exceptions to that. Courses or programs that require hands-on learning, such as our CTE programs, that have a lab component, our health a lab component, or health programs that have a lab component. They will be offered onsite at the institution under some very strict, uh, safety protocols and monitoring guidelines. The, um, on-campus courses, our classes are scheduled to end by Thanksgiving. It doesn't mean that the class itself is over. Uh, some colleges are simply opting to take the classes online after Thanksgiving, as well as examinations after Thanksgiving. But we wanted to make sure that, um, to the extent we could, we don't have people on campus after Thanksgiving because that kind of coincides with fall season. I'm sorry, not fall season, flu season. And so we want it to be, um, as safe as possible. But notwithstanding these challenges, we are ready for returning students. We're ready for our new students. We're ready for students who don't even normally consider us as an option. Believe it or not, we have received, uh, a lot of interest from students who attend four-year institutions who don't necessarily want to pay for fall semester at their schools because they would be online. And they know that they can get a quality and more affordable education, uh, from us. So that's been a, a really interesting, um, twist in this registration. And of course, we are working really hard on a marketing campaign that we're going to launch in the fall to help double our efforts to recruit in the spring. But the bottom line is, yes, challenges, yes, we are going to have a very soft fall, but yes, we are prepared, uh, uh, at our colleges to offer the quality education that we're known for, and we are looking forward to a very robust spring. Chancellor, that really concludes my, my update.
Uh, percentage wise, uh, what are we looking at in regards to numbers, uh, compared to our norm?
Um, so I can, I can share that with you, but I do want to give you this caveat because they are a moving target. Our numbers are updated every, uh, couple of hours. But, uh, just to give you a comparison, if we're looking at the fall headcount for 2019, that was at 79,938. Uh, as of this morning, our headcount is 55,981. If you want to look at, uh, credit hours, uh, in 19, they were 757, 146. As of this morning, 552, 185. Our FTE, uh, this time last year, 50,477. Right now, we're at 36,812. I do want to really emphasize that these are preliminary numbers. Um, this doesn't, what I'm giving to you as of this morning is the total number of registrations, um, but that doesn't necessarily equate to the number of people who have paid. Um, and we tend to lose, um, some folks between now and the start of school. So they will, they will fluctuate quite a bit, but we tend to have a surge the week that school begins. So we are expecting, uh, those people who are on the fence right now, uh, to, uh, come to our institutions next week, uh, and take advantage of registration then. You're welcome.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Susan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also mention another, other issue really. It's, it's not just a project, it's a major undertaking. But, uh, as you know, federal government passed several pieces of legislation dealing with the CARES Act, allocating money to schools, to school systems, to the states and local governments. Uh, and we have been recipient of significant dollars, both here and at, uh, the colleges themselves. Sarah Calhoun has had the responsibility of, I'm just going to use the term riding herd over all of that because it's almost like trying to drive a herd of cats or something of that nature. Because money sometimes was more available than the rules and regulations to follow. Uh, but we've worked with our schools because we've, two things, we wanted to make sure the money was managed properly. And number two was second, we didn't want to lose any money that we had an opportunity to use and benefit from. So I, I've asked her if she would give you a, a general report, and in addition to that, we will be providing you, as we have in the past, further details directly to you so you will be able to look at the numbers. But as we go forward, uh, we do anticipate having to rush to do some things and to utilize some of the money. We'll work with the finance committee as we go forward and with the, with Chairman and I, Finance Committee Chairman have discussed it, uh, we're going to do whatever we have to do to make sure we don't send money back, but we're going to make sure we also are using it to the benefit of the system and to the students. So Sarah, can you give them a quick kind of?
Sure. Thank you, sir. Um, good morning, everyone. Um, so as, as the Chancellor mentioned, the, the funds came at us very quickly, which we were obviously very thankful for, um, but we've had to respond very quickly as such because not only did they come at us quickly, but they're going to expire quickly. And the colleges have been, um, just excellent at responding to our inquiries and our requests for reporting, um, to ensure that we are not duplicating efforts, um, and that we are utilizing the funds to the absolute best of the ability to benefit not only the students, but the colleges, um, and faculty and staff moving forward as we live in this new distance learning environment. So initially, the funds that came out, uh, were directly for the students and that totaled, um, just under $28 million that went directly to our students, um, in cash awards for the recovery of outlay during the spring COVID impact. Then the second round of funds that the colleges had access to was just again under 28 million. Um, and these funds were utilized for the college to recover efforts and expand distance learning, um, for the continuation of spring that had to be put on hold abruptly and for the planning for summer and fall COVID impact. Um, and they have responded very quickly and very positively to these efforts and they are using those dollars wisely to benefit, um, current students and, um, expanding services for future students as well. Then, uh, the third round of funding that has come through from the CARES Act, uh, are directly for the HBC colleges and then, uh, strengthening first program and then a supplemental, uh, award that went to colleges so that no college has received less than half a million dollars in CARES Act funding. Um, in total, our colleges have received over $79 million in CARES Act awards and they are using those to the best of their ability to, uh, propagate our mission for the benefit of our students. So, uh, we're, we're working towards that. The timeline, um, to utilize these funds may be extended. We're hopeful that will be extended, um, but as, as of now, we're working on a timeline of 12 months from the initial award timeline that the colleges requested the dollars. So that may fluctuate slightly depending on when they got their grant request into the federal government, um, but it's all right around between, um, March, April, and May of next year is our anticipation of these funds expiring. Um, as the Chancellor said, we don't want to lose any dollars that we can, um, possibly utilize, and so we're making every effort to do that. Um, the fourth round of funding that we're working with, with CARES Act is through the state. Um, at this point, the system office is managing these funds and, um, sending reimbursement to the colleges as we receive them from the state. We have yet to receive a reimbursement that we've requested from the state, but our total award at this point is 8.7 million dollars. And that is for public health initiatives that the colleges have had to respond to and that the system office has had to respond to, to keep our doors open and to remain safe for our, uh, practices. So that 8.7 million dollars has currently been awarded, but, um, no, no funds been received as of yet. And then we are also working with the state, um, to move towards, uh, educational advancement funds through CARES Act. And those funds have yet to be awarded, so the dollar amount has not yet been determined as to how much, uh, the system office will be receiving, but those funds will go directly, um, to the benefit of the schools, but the system needs to manage those funds. We are still waiting on the language to come from the state as to how those dollars, uh, will need to be managed, if it's going to be co-management through the colleges and the system office, or strictly through the system office. So we will keep you updated as additional information becomes available for those funds. So we are working, um, with an extensive amount of dollars that we had not previously budgeted for, which anyone in the finance world knows that means extra work. But we are happy to take this extra work because, um, this, this comes at a, a wonderful opportunity, opportunity time for our colleges to move forward into the distance learning environment. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I have.
Mr. Chairman, uh,
Chairman.
I would just say,
Go ahead.
Whatever we can do from the audit finance committee to help, you know, we stand prepared. And I would suggest to the board too, that if, um, I understand that purchases through this, these fundings will also have to meet state bid requirements.
Correct.
Some of those with the amounts that may be over certain limits will require, uh, significant advertising time, bidding, awarding, and then, uh, actual expenditure of the money, not just obligation of the money by these deadlines. Uh, so it, we do hope the deadlines get extended, but if they do not, we may be called on as a board possibly to have a, um, a special call meeting to address a, a package of, uh, requests along these lines. And, you know, I would just ask that, um, we be flexible in doing that. We do have to obviously do the proper notification to have those types of meetings, but we certainly, as Chancellor said, want to use all of these and not lose, uh, not lose any of it if we can avoid that.
Thank you. I appreciate you mentioning that, uh, Mr. McAnally. And we have started the RFP process for many of these anticipated expenditures to try and get ahead of the, uh, the wait time that those RFP and this process is take, um, especially when it comes to the, the mass purchases on behalf of the colleges. We wanted to try and, uh, be as prepared as we possibly could. We're still working with an unknown variable of what would the state allow us to utilize. So, um, that, that's part of the dilemma with these dollars is that, uh, there is a lot of still, uh, unknown variables that we're trying to plan around. Um, but we've gotten really good at that with COVID, so we're, we're, we're doing everything we can.
Any further questions, comments? Mr. Chairman, that's my report for today.
Thank you, Chancellor. Uh, and, and Mr. McAnally, thanks again for bringing up that point that we may have to stream, streamline our process. Our next, uh, we'll re, after adjournment, we'll reconvene, uh, for our work session for the, uh, immediately following this. Our next regular board meeting is September 9th, 2020 at 10 a.m. Uh, I have one, uh, comment in recognition I'd like to make. Uh, we, we all, we serve with each other and, and we have many outstanding board members that have, uh, distinguished themselves in the state. And when this happens, it's not above me to thoroughly embarrass them at a board meeting to, uh, and recognize them. But I, I'm so proud that, uh, excuse me, Crystal Brown has received, uh, an honor and recognition, uh, from, uh, the State Association for Community, for Chamber of Commerce. And I, I want to just read their, um, their release on this. On Monday, the Chamber of Commerce Association of Alabama named Crystal Brown, the Chamber Professional of the Year, recognizing her exemplary performance, leadership of an annual, uh, chamber and her professional career achievements. And this is significant. This is the first time the award was given to someone who is not a chamber president, CEO, or executive director. Congratulations, Ms. Brown.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
First.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's my pleasure to serve. Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, any comments from the board, anything else?
Chairman, let me make a comment. I, I, I appreciate and have enjoyed working with Crystal. She carries a tremendous amount of respect in the community she serves. All I have to do is talk to the people in her neighborhood and it's kind of, would go to Crystal. And I, I think that's, that's a good indication of what Crystal does and her respect. But I find the same thing with all the board and that's an important, uh, important thing to the community college system. I would want to say that as of today, uh, at, I believe, 1 o'clock, there is a conference call, which we are participating in as a system. Keith Phillips is serving, uh, the State of Alabama Community College System, uh, Workforce Operations and some special projects that we're doing, along with the program in North Carolina has been recognized as model, as a modeled system by the National Governors Association. And we were asked to participate in a conference call around the nation today to talk about those kinds of things. Uh, I take a lot of pride for the system and, uh, and, and the contribution you make in the leadership so that we can do the kinds of things that is happening across the country and that the system is being recognized. We have a lot of good presidents. We have a lot of good employees who are doing a tremendous job in leading the education efforts for our students. And I just want you to be aware that it's being recognized nationally. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's, that's great to hear, Chancellor. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the presidents that are retiring, especially Dr. Perry Ward, who's in my district, District 6. His leadership has been exemplary. Uh, he leads one of the top HBCUs in the country and he's been recognized nationally. So I just want to say congratulations, Dr. Ward, and wish you the best in retirement.
You're here.
We're sad to see both Dr. Lavender and Dr. Ward retire. That's bittersweet, but we wish you well.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you, board. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in a second.
Motion by Milton to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned and we will go into work session. Northeast Alabama Community College, Bishop State Community College, and Wallace Community College, Selma. All three of them are modifying their mission statement. I think, uh, some of them are just maybe one word. Uh, any, any input from the policy committee?
No, sir. We, we, um, I think a couple of them actually stayed the same. Chairman, we are, uh, with each one of those. We did get clarification on that first one, um, there on, uh,
Northeast.
Northeast. It is just the four, first portion of that, the actual mission statement. And the remaining 10 points are their goals. So there was a question about that, so. 10 points are their goals, so there was a question about that, so.
Any, any other discussion from the board on these three mission statements? If not, we'll move on to academic and student affairs. We have two programs recommended. Staff to speak to this. This is Bishop State requesting to institute an associate implied science and medical lab tech, laboratory tech, and associate implied science and medical care therapy. Conference calls, we, these were thoroughly reviewed. Any discussion from them?
I just want to make a note that my understanding is the fiscal considerations that are identified for both programs is a, is a summary. It's not individual dollars that they're asking. It's for both the medical laboratory tech, technician program as well as the respiratory care therapy. And I just think we need to just add a bullet or note stating that so we'll understand that the fiscal considerations combine both programs and not the same for each program as a point of clarification.
Excellent point. Anything else from the board on these two items?
Just appreciate the several letters of support there. That's always helpful.
Yes, it, the packet was thorough, and all the key institutions, health institutions in the area were represented.
They're ready to partner with them. That's good. That's the extent outstanding.
Right.
Anything else on those? If not, we'll move to the request for additional instruction site for Reed State. Does any staff to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, I addressed this in the telephone conferences. I'll, I'll do it today as well. This is Reed State's request for approval of an additional instruction site. This instruction site will actually be on the Greenville campus of Lurleen B. Wallace Community College. Reed State is proposing to offer at the new instructional site a licensed practical nursing program, which is not offered at LBW. This program will provide educational experiences in this area, in the Butler and surrounding county areas. There will be no fiscal consideration to Reed State in using these facilities, and it will complement the other programs on the Greenville campus. Any questions?
I just want to say I appreciate Lurleen B. Wallace working with Reed to make that happen. Appreciate the cooperation.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to fiscal. We have the recommended operating budgets for the system and for the system office.
Mr. Chairman, I would just, the budgeted amounts from the 1920 year versus the proposed, you can see there about, what, $8 million difference, and that's pretty much comes from the tuition and fees reduction that's anticipated, as Dr. Price has already aptly discussed with us.
Any other questions from the board or comments, or the staff have any other, anything else to say concerning these two items? If not, we'll move on to facilities. We have a recommendation for roof replacement, extensive roof replacement at Enzer Hall, sorry, at Gadsden State. Is there staff to discuss this?
Good morning, Mr. Thompson and members of the board. The facilities action item that we have today comes from Gadsden State Community College. That is a request to authorize a roof replacement project at Enzer Hall. No or agile advance. One more, please. The roof that is currently on Enzer Hall is probably overdue in terms of needing replacement. We patched it multiple times, but the time has come to, to replace it entirely. The scope of this project, you can see primarily almost 40,000 square feet of low slope roofing, over 5,000 square feet of sheet roofing and waterproofing, about 1,800 square feet of concrete patio. The total, the total amount, adding those three numbers together, comes up to 46,000 square feet that we're going to work on through this project. This project did bid yesterday, I'm happy to report. The bids came in under our expectations. We were expecting construction bids of around $750,000. We had three bidders yesterday. The low bidder came in at $607,000. Next one, please. Enzer Hall is located there, just behind Allen Hall at the main campus of Gadsden State Community College. Of course, Allen Hall is where the president's office is located. When you use a construction bid of $607,000, add in the design fees, add in a contingency of 10%, the total fiscal consideration for this project will be $728,616. This project was previously presented to the board facilities committee, and they gave their authorization to bring it forward to the full board work session. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have about this project.
Chuck, the facilities committee went over this, and our recommendation is to move forward with it.
Questions, comments? Thank you, thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Mr. Waller. We appreciate that. I'm gonna go back to the system office budget to make sure. Mr. McNally, did you have anything else to add to that, that item?
No, I'm sorry, I did not. I just, I didn't recognize that we went across both of them there, but-
I bundled them in my comments, so anyway, that, that was a little bit kind of smoothed over, but anyway, any board members have any other comments about the operating budgets for the system or the operating budget for the system office? Or questions? Okay. If not, anything else to be discussed? Mr. McNally, I think you already brought up in the board meeting that there may be a need for us to streamline our process in regard to the CARES Act purchases in order to meet deadlines, so the board just needs to be cognizant of that, please, and there may be a need even over and above them coming straight to a board meeting and bypassing work session, but they will go through the finance committee. We appreciate their leadership and their involvement in working with the Chancellor and his staff, and there also may be some needs for a call meeting, giving proper notice for the, to comply with the Open Meetings Act in order to approve purchases for this. Anything else from the board?
Al, I just want to thank Dr. Sykes and Bishop for the planning execution. As you're aware, and Crystal and Milton, it was, it was put together perfectly. It was a good day and just well organized and executed. Thank them for their efforts.
Thanks, Chuck. I can't say enough about the staging under the, under the circumstances of this pandemic, and I sent pictures to all the board. They, I was just really impressed with the staging of that event by President Sykes and his staff. They had a groundbreaking committee that, that really thought it through, and I'm sure his leadership was key in that because he's just been very conscious of the welfare of his staff and the welfare of his students in regard to the pandemic. That's been first and foremost for him, so I really appreciated that, but it was, it was a really great day, Chancellor, due to the Chancellor's vision and leadership and that of President Sykes, that they've broken ground on this advanced training facility, and there's just a lot of excitement about it. On Bishop State's Facebook page, they videotaped the entire thing. If the board, if anyone's inclined, you can go take a look at that, and they just did a great job of marking the date and making a record of the event itself, so it was just an important moment, and it was staged and executed quite well. Thanks, Chuck. Anything?
Chairman, I would say not only the groundbreaking, but thank you, Dr. Sykes, for the tour, the tours that we got to see of the additional facilities, while what, what amazing partnerships we have with Alabama Power and others. It was really exciting to see, and it was just a great day, and Chairman Thompson, touche, represented us very well, so please take the time to look at the video if you get an opportunity, so thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Brown.
Chairman, I'd like to point out too, in that whole process, it was, in looking at the new construction and the capital outlay for the advanced manufacturing, it's easy, if you're not careful, to not notice what he's doing with the project behind that, which is creating an environment that's completely needed, the school needs to upgrade the health science programs in that school. Upon completion of the renovation of the library building and the, the advanced manufacturing, they will have a state-of-the-art health science facility for instruction, which is something they've been struggling with, and they were kind of just making do with a lot of things, but that's going to be one of the neatest things that is happening at that campus.
Thank you, Chancellor. Anyone else? If not, thank you for everyone's participation, and Chancellor, thank you for you and your staff, as usual, do a great job of coordinating these meetings, distance meetings, and, and making sure everything works so very well. We appreciate all the accommodations and support from your staff. Having said that, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.